We got a sign.
Mike, call me to order. Thank you, Shaw. Let us know our indications.
Father, we are grateful to come as a city to you. We thank you for this evening and we ask for your wisdom and your strength and your insights and decisions that we make and we give you all the glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Daniel. Roll call? Here?
Here.
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 Here. All right, we thank you all for being here. We just have one item on the agenda. Resolution 25191, which is approved Cook Museum of Natural Science expansion investment, and I will let Brian start this off.
Thank you all for allowing me to share and present today. It's an honor. As you know, Governor Ivey and the Alabama Legislature have designated the Cook Museum of Natural Science as the North Alabama STEM Center and appropriated nine and a half million dollars in support. The precedent for this was the state's appropriation to the Saven Center in Tuscaloosa, touting it as a regional STEM Center for West Alabama. Our North Alabama STEM Center could have easily been located elsewhere in North Alabama, so we are grateful for the opportunity right here in Decatur. Since opening June 2019, we have welcomed more than 512,000 guests and nearly 80,000 students, and I'm thrilled to say that we have grown in attendance each year since COVID. The state's investment is a critical catalyst for both public and private investments to nearly double the scope of the museum from 62,000 square feet to almost 120,000 square feet, creating new STEM labs, programming, and event spaces, and exhibition galleries. Critical to accomplish the state of Alabama's designation and the museum's vision is the City of Decatur's investment in the projects required parking infrastructure with a parking deck. By way of a land swap, the city would own, build, and operate the deck for a return, and the museum, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, will have the adjacent land required for expansion. I have met with Jen DeCarlo Watts, the Princess Theater Managing Director, and Julia Roth, Board Chairwoman, both of which are in full and enthusiastic support of this. Essentially, we are creating a safer, private back-of-house lot for the princess and museum to share in providing a better presentation of the theater for guests parking at the ACA lot and the current city deck. For the new proposed deck, the number of parking spaces needed to be replaced is around 300, which is frequently full. This expansion will generate frequent demand of 400 to 500 parking spaces, and that's a conservative estimate based on the substantial increase in estimated attendance. The land swap and city deck is already activating additional economic development interest. I'm excited to share that we have secured a third-party's letter of intent to construct a 130-room hotel with a prominent national brand. Once completed, Decatur will have a $60 million-plus educational institution and tourism destination, providing a quality of life and a brand builder any community would aspire to have. The state and city's leadership will energize North Alabama's families and businesses to generously and enthusiastically join us in our second $20 million-plus capital campaign. The Tennessee Aquarium is a great testament to the city's investment in a similar-type project where if they had only created one of the two buildings that they have, the two towers, it would have been a nice community aquarium. But because of the critical mass and the doubling of their scope to what it is, Chattanooga was really able to capitalize on the regional draw attracting hotel stays and tourists and families and those there in town for sporting tournaments and on and on for all these years. The museum has the support of Governor K. Ivey, State Superintendent Dr. Eric Mackey, the State Legislature, the Morgan County Commission, Princess Theater, Decatur Morgan County Tourism, Decatur Morgan County Chamber of Commerce, Decatur Morgan County Entrepreneurial Center, and Decatur City School Superintendent Dr. Douglas, who was planning to be here today to support it but was unable to attend at the last minute. As I mentioned, this once-in-a-generation project for our community will not happen, and the money will return to the state without the city's investment, facilitating the needed parking infrastructure. It's our honor to call Decatur home and have to have served the community more than 50 years through the museum, and we are grateful for your serious consideration and support. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. We will now move into just comments from the public. We have several people signed in, and we'll start with Mr. Faruki first.
Do you believe Mr. Mackey is the project?
No, he's not. Literally, you're the second one.
Okay.
The question I have is why do we need to do this now?
I wish we could have done it yesterday, is my answer to that.
Okay, well, we do have...
We're ready to move forward.
We do have... You are all ready to move forward?
Yes. It's a good project for the city.
Okay, so you all got briefed on it, and the citizens have now finally heard what this might be. It might be like the Tennessee Aquarium. We already have a parking garage next to a hotel. We're gonna have another parking garage with another hotel, with the hope that we're gonna expand by 25%, I think was the increased admission. If I understood correctly.
I think it was 40 or so.
I think it's closer to 25, yeah. If you read the documents, closer to 25. The... Some of the stats also talked about increase of 88,000 estimated for 2025 and up to 19,000 students. So if you take the total number, subtract the students, we're only really talking about additional 267 people coming in per day. So do we need a parking garage for 267 more people?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I heard from Mr. Pike's mouth.
Excuse me? She was that?
I said, "I heard from you, Mr. Pike," who works for... Which company?
I thought I heard you say something different.
Which company was it?
I thought I heard you say something different. Please continue.
Okay.
I'd hate for you to waste your time on something useless.
Exactly. Why is... Why are we spending all this resources and money when the real question is, why do we not have the best STEM facility in Northern Alabama? Why don't we focus on building the best STEM research facility? For $9.5 million, we could buy a lot of used-up real estate around here and build conglomerate campus-like resources to facilitate STEM.
Shouldn't I just say?
Didn't he just say that the state designated them as the North Alabama STEM Center and that they're trying to invest $60 million into this project? What else do you want? What else do you think is gonna... Should we...
I want... Here's what I would like from my council and my mayor is... Can I speak, please?
Please have at it.
I would like us to develop courses of action, opportunities for different viewpoints on how to spend this money applicably to make the same end state happen, perhaps at less cost, perhaps at less disruption to the City of Decatur for a X number of years project it's gonna require to build this thing. That's what I'd like.
Yeah, so people with years of experience regarding this type of investment, I guess you could say, into the area are involved in this, people that have degrees in this area.
And which degree do you have, sir?
There are a lot more. Currently, I'm in college, so I'm working on my degree. I'm not as old as you are.
Okay, now, the third-party letter of intent...
You're gonna let me finish. You're gonna let me finish. The people that are working on this project have a lot more experience and education than anybody sitting on this stash regarding that project. They've worked very hard to get to this point, and it'd be very stupid of the city not to support this project or do what we can to help ensure this project comes to the City of Decatur.
Let's allow Mr. Faruki to finish.
When will you all allow and enable the citizens of Decatur to provide input to this project before it gets stamped and rubber-stamped approval?
You're doing it right now. You're speaking to us right now. You're giving your input as you speak.
When have you in District 4 asked anyone in your district what they would like to have in this facility, in this area?
My number is 256309.
And you answered my question. Thank you.
Call me anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Faruki. Kara, you have something that you want to say?
I have my question answered before, okay?
All right, Sharonda Ackland.
So before we rush into this, I have serious concerns about the urgency, timing, and transparency of this resolution. We're talking about a major commitment that could have long-term financial consequences for taxpayers. We have a new mayor and council coming soon and a newly hired city planner who hasn't even started yet. Why can't we wait until the new leadership and planning staff have had time to evaluate this project in full? This resolution uses vague language like facilitate and work cooperatively, which may sound harmless, but it could quietly obligate the city to donate funds, take on infrastructure costs, or commit to partnerships that we can't walk back. Before we have proved anything, the people of Decatur deserve clear answers about what this expansion really means, how much it would cost, and how we would recruit these funds. Transparency and accountability should come before ribbon cuttings and headlines. Ultimately, this is about fiscal responsibility and public trust. The citizens of Decatur deserve transparency before any commitment is made that could impact our city's budget or resources.
Okay, Ms. Ackland, Mike Stovall.
I don't know. If Hunter can answer this question or Mr. Pike can answer... I mean, Pike can answer it, but why are we not having a public meeting about this?
You're sitting in a public meeting regarding...
So we're having it right now. Why didn't we announce it better? You just put it on social media about two days ago.
Yeah. What else would you suggest?
What I would suggest is maybe we could have put it in the newspaper. Maybe we could have put it on the news to get everybody's input, because this is not everybody's input.
Pretty bad.
Here's what I've...
Okay.
...heard a lot, and we have different thoughts on what the council, how the council should behave and what our role is. But when I ran for office in 2020, I actually had an amendment that said he was going to have community meetings before every council meeting, and whatever the majority of people at that meeting wanted to do, that's what he... How he would vote. And I even looked it up as a Decatur daily, and my response to that was that is not what I would do. And my reasoning was, the people of District 5 are electing me to use my own intellect, take the experiences I have and the knowledge I have in a... Whatever the situation might be, like this project, to make sure I go and research and find the answers that are appropriate and use my own intellect and knowledge, and of course, take feedback, but then vote appropriately. And I said that before I was... People went to the ballot box to elect me. And so they elected me with about 70% of the vote, and so that's what I've done. And so I'm not interested, frankly, in holding community-wide meetings for District 5 for every single decision, when there's things going on in an area, like we had a neighborhood that was gonna have sewer rehab. We had a community meeting to just explain to the group what was gonna happen and when. But the way I look at our role is that I was elected to use my ability, intellect, and experience, gather the appropriate information, and vote. That's my part. I know other people disagree with that, and that's fine, but that's what I said before I ran, and that's what I'm doing in this case, and that's what I'll continue to do for two and a half months.
Okay, with that being said, I agree with you. You shouldn't have to have a community meeting every time you have a meeting. That would be crazy. And whoever said that, that's crazy. But on big items, you should... It was who?
Rodney.
Thank you. But with big items, you should talk to your people and see... Or not just your people, but the citizens of Decatur, and see if we really want this, because what it looks like to me that this is a campaign promise, and this campaign promise has to be done before you all get out of office. Why can't we sit and talk about this? Why can't it go to the community? Because the community does not like it. The city... Everybody's not in agreeance with it. Just because the chamber's in agreeance with it and just because Brian Cook is in agreeance with it doesn't mean the city is in agreeance with it. It's a campaign promise. It sounds like to me. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Mike, move on to Kelly Thomas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. On behalf of the Decatur Downtown Redevelopment Authority, I want to voice our enthusiastic support for this resolution. The Cook Museum's expansion, paired with its designation as the North Alabama STEM Center, is a once-in-a-generation opportunity for our city. The DRA is proud to support and partner with the Cook Museum on this transformative project, working together to ensure it maximizes benefits for downtown and our entire community. The Cook family has a proven history of developing excellent products that exceed expectations, and the museum's recognition as USA Today's Best New Museum in America in 2021 is proof of that. Developments like this directly benefit local citizens by creating jobs, strengthening small businesses, and fueling long-term economic growth that improves quality of life for everyone. This project will not only nearly double the museum's size and increase annual visitors to more than 120,000, it will also bring over 300 construction jobs, millions in local wages, and a lasting boost to our hospitality, dining, and retail sectors. The addition of a new hotel and improved parking infrastructure strengthens downtown's ability to welcome visitors while supporting our existing businesses. Most importantly, the expanded STEM programs will inspire thousands of students from across the region, growing our future workforce and positioning Decatur as a hub for innovation, education, and tourism. This is exactly the kind of catalytic investment that fuels downtown revitalization and benefits every corner of our community. We wholeheartedly support this resolution and look forward to the growth, energy, and opportunity it will bring to the heart of Decatur. Thank you.
Crystal Brown.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. It's a privilege to stand before you and on behalf of the Decatur Morgan County Chamber of Commerce. The Cook Museum has already proven itself to be one of Decatur's greatest assets, including the recent designation by the governor, welcoming more than half a million visitors since opening and providing unmatched STEM learning experiences for students from across Alabama. Its designation as the North Alabama STEM Center elevates our city's role as a regional leader in science, education, workforce development, and tourism. This expansion, paired with the city's support for parking infrastructure, will not only serve the museum's growing needs and also spark additional economic development, including the new hotel and surrounding businesses. It's an investment in our cultural vitality and our economic future and the educational opportunities that we will offer the next generation. For these reasons and more, on behalf of the Decatur Morgan County Chamber of Commerce, I respectfully ask and urge the City Council to approve this resignation... Resolution, excuse me, resolution. Thank you so much.
Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm Danielle Gibson. I'm the Tourism Director here in Decatur, Morgan County, and I'm here to share the incredible impact that tourism has made and continues to make in Decatur and Morgan County. Tourism is not just about visitors. It's about jobs, economic growth, community pride, and creating lasting memories. This information is based on the Alabama Tourism Department. Every year, they conduct an economic impact... Economic impact of tourism in the state of Alabama. So let's first define what a visitor is. A visitor is someone who comes from over 50 miles from where they live. In the past year alone, over 4,150 jobs were created in Morgan County thanks to travel-related activities. Visitors spent $404 million, and lodging taxes generated $2 million, directly benefiting our local economy. Our mission at Decatur and Morgan County is clear. We advocate for our community at every level, local, state, and federal, to ensure Decatur is part of the conversation when it comes to funding attractions and major projects. We market Decatur far beyond our borders, positioning it as a must-visit destination for events, recreation, and experiences. In 2024, travelers spent $23.9 billion in Alabama as a whole, supporting over 248,590 jobs. That includes many right here in Morgan County. These numbers aren't just statistics. They represent families, small businesses, and community growth. So let's talk about the visitor impact. 6% of all restaurant spending came from visitors. 6% of retail spending was visitor-driven. 11% of attraction spending was from tourists. 439,000 visitors came to the Decatur Downtown Historic District with over 2 million visits. These numbers reflect the success of our marketing efforts outreach along with our other partners. So through partnerships with media outlets like Alabama Magazine, The Alabama Visitor's Guide, Sweet Home Alabama, Soul Groom, and platforms like Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube, we've reached millions. Our social media content alone generated 4.3 million views on Facebook and 388,000 on Instagram. In addition, we've hosted and assisted or partnered with around 50 events so far this year, from festivals and tournaments to conferences and community celebrations. Each event brings people together, boosting local businesses, and showcases the best of Decatur and Morgan County. Our sports tourism efforts have been especially impactful, with an estimated $5.2 million in economic impact from our special events, which 4,700 room nights are verified from that in sports alone. These rooms represent real dollars spent in our hotels, restaurants, and shops, supporting local jobs and businesses. So it's our job as a tourism office to come alongside the Cook Museum of Natural Science. It is one of our most treasured assets. Okay. This world-class facility is more than just an attraction. It's a cornerstone of our tourism strategy. It draws families, school groups, and science enthusiasts from across the region and beyond. The museum not only educates and inspires, but it also drives significant foot traffic to our downtown area, supports local restaurants and shops, and enhances our reputation as a destination for learning and exploration. It's a symbol of what makes Decatur unique, where nature, science, and community come together. And while sports tourism is a major focus of ours, our team is actively pursuing bus tours, group tour operators, weddings, corporate groups, and conferences. These markets bring in diverse visitors and create opportunities for year-round engagement with our hotels and venues. We're building relationships, attending trade shows, and promoting Decatur as a destination for all types of gatherings. Tourism is a powerful engine for growth. It connects people to the heart of Decatur and Morgan County. It drives innovation, unity, and pride, and with your continued support, we'll keep building a vibrant, welcoming community that people want to visit and stay. We are beyond supportive of the efforts of the Cook family and the impact they have on tourism. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. Mike, do you want to speak or are you just answering questions?
Yeah, a few questions. I've heard... Yeah, we... Just to help you understand what you're looking at, this is a rendering that's been prepared by the architect engaged by the museum to show the existing museum and the proposed addition. As you see, the proposed addition sits upon now what is the current parking lot for the museum. And if we could go to the next one. This is an aerial view to show the museum. It shows in the foreground in the center, you see the existing Regent's Bank. Behind that, you see a representation of what the parking deck would look like. And then on the left, the L-shaped building with the white top is a representation of what the 130-room hotel would look like. You can see the magnitude of the development is significant. It does cross over a couple of streets that would require vacating and some utilities to be relocated, but it's definitely changes the skyline of downtown, and I think it goes in a direction that Decatur One Comprehensive Plan wants it to go to. Some things I've heard that I'd just like to clarify and help, as having been retained by the museum for this project, potentially also working on the hotel, we're engaged in this in a lot of different ways. So the resolution is before you today is not, obviously, in the purview of the Planning Commission. As the development progresses, we do understand that there will be many required items that will come before the Planning Commission for approval. This is in alignment with how large developments happen, is that we gotta take care of these kinds of agreements before you can move forward with it, before the monies from the state can be accepted, before it can be put into play. We have to have the partners to do these things. We understand there will be subdivision plats, most likely, a couple of different plats. There will be some vacation requests... There will be some vacation requests, and there will be site plan reviews. I mean, we're looking at least at three site plan reviews because there's three separate buildings or projects that are going to go up here. All of those must come before the Planning Commission. So, that's at least seven or eight trips for items that will have to go before the Planning Commission to be responded to. Uh, it's with respect to the One Decatur Comprehensive Plan, yes, this is in compliance with that. It is planned to be urban core downtown, which is the proposed future use. This is exactly what urban core downtown is for. Some of the language you see in the plan talks about creating quality places, advancing our prosperity, enhancing our amenities, and strengthening our community. This project does that in every way.
Why not, Taylor, but can you continue?
Sure.
Is going to have an impact on the areas around it?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The footprint is of significant size that it will impact the areas. The properties, uh, commercial properties in this area, we probably will see a lot of follow-on redevelopment of properties into new, newer developments, probably over on the Molson Street side and all on west of Sixth Avenue, I think, for sure. Absolutely. You know, this is a lot of questions about why does this come before you now? Why we've not talked about this? This is the first piece of the puzzle. If the city doesn't come on board to be a partner in this, this does not happen. This is the procedure for developers to bring projects to municipalities. The city goes and recruits, works through the chamber to do that business development. The process is well within the procedures. And as this project continues, we're going to be coming forward. There's a lot of public hearings that'll happen with regard to the specifics and things that have to be done. Uh, as been stated, the hotel developer is well-known, successful, um, great choice, in my opinion. Um, you know, there will be some additional traffic. There is obviously a requirement. One of the things that I want to make sure, and Brian, I can't recall if you mentioned it, but we're losing, with the development as planned, we're losing 300 spaces. That's by the museum and the old Lucky's overflow that gets used and where the parking deck would go. All of that is currently used as parking for the museum. So, we're replacing spaces plus building additional to cover future development and these developments.
We may, like, we may follow on your questions. Want to get a question in a second.
Okay. Just one last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, we've been... I look forward to working with the planning director. I've wanted a planning director a long time. Uh, and I've looked forward for him to being here. But we've been without one for 15 years. Business and opportunities come rapidly. Cities have to respond at the speed of business or you lose these opportunities. And that's where we are today.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for a proposal. We have a motion by Mr. Pepper. Second, by Mr. Pike. Any discussion?
I'll say that I've heard lots of numbers since Monday of last week. I've heard number after number, um, the amount of people who are going to come. Just, I won't say that we've been inundated with numbers, but we've heard lots of numbers. The one number that I have not heard is the cost that we're going to pay as a city. What's it going to cost us for a parking deck? And so, in my mind, we are effectively saying a blank check. So, based on that and not knowing what the cost is going to be to the city and to the citizens of Decatur, I can't support this state based on that alone.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'll say a couple of things. Obviously, it's an incredible development. The museum's been a really good thing for the city. I think, um, Brian mentioned, and I think he is accurate, that, uh, there's one STEM center of something in the state of Alabama that I know of right now, which is at the Saban Center in Testalusa, which I guess they refer to as STEM Center of West Alabama. And for us, in North to land the STEM Center of North Alabama is a big deal. And it's a big deal for our city. It's a big deal for the region. This could have, and most likely in years past, would have gone to Huntsville. Uh, but we are going to get it. And that's huge for us. But it's also huge for our students. And when you think about Dr. Douglas being in support of this proposal, Dr. Eric Mackey, what that means for a kid that's in Decatur City Schools that may not know anything about STEM. Um, and actually, Jeannie Payne is somewhere. Maybe she's here. Anyway, I heard Jeannie tell a story about a kid that this literally happened. Came on a field trip, not sure where he was from, didn't know anything about STEM-related fields, but then left interested in that and wanting to pursue a potential career in that as a young student. So, our students that are going to say, I live in the city where the STEM Center of North Alabama is, it's going to make a difference in most kids' lives. When we have big, um, kind of economic development, City Harbor Project or CCI, Greenpoint, whatever, Fairfield. The question is, we've had a lot of, of the kind of coming behind the scenes, and they're not good. And it's always three questions for me. Does, is there a proven track record that there's a, for lack of a better term, balance sheet to support, to support this? And we checked that box here. Has it been done before? Has this developer, this case, family, organization been successful in something like this before? We checked that box. And then I always go with, okay, say, worst-case scenario, it all falls apart, what are we left with? In this case, we'd be left with a parking deck in our downtown that we would own and operate. So, we checked a lot of boxes there. That makes it, I think, a very calculated safe if there's risk to move forward. This is the kind of project that is the reason I ran for city council. I noticed, and this is not a... This is more for people that are no longer sitting up here. But I noticed that I thought we would chalk in our pencil a lot when great opportunities came. You know, we're going to sit there for months and months and go down the line and make sure every cent, and then we lose the project. Or we're just against it. Or we think cities shouldn't do this kind of stuff. And meanwhile, Huntsville, Madison, Athens, Florence is. We're losing those opportunities. I ran for city council, and I was very clear before one person voted, or for a single person voted for me, to make sure we were very aggressive in getting these type of opportunities. And I voted that way for 4.9 years now. And I'm going to vote that way today. And I think this is a really good project for our city. I think it would be a mistake for us to pass it over or to be too slow when a good deal is on the table. So, that's where I am today.
So, to say that we don't know about numbers or just a blank check, who'd think? We're talking there, a space, $33,000? Yeah, so 500 spaces, pushing, knocking on 17 million for that. And then I think we have, uh, utility relocation that we would work with the EU on. We don't have numbers on that, to the best of my knowledge. But those are the big numbers. Is that right?
I'll go first. See if you don't have any further.
Yes, sir.
One other thing I would say, one reason that... The question came out, but one reason that developers, especially in a big project like this, it's very expensive to hire, Blake, to do civil drawings of this nature and to get, start construction drawings. And so, develop, people that are going to be putting a lot of money forward, a big effort forward, they need to know before they start going down that road that the city or all the entities are behind it. And in this case, the state is behind it. From what I understand, the county has indicated they will be in some form. And I think we should be too, but...
Any other discussion? We do have a motion in a second. Um, no other discussion. Roll call.
Hayden.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Jackson.
No.
Nick Masters.
Aye.
Edward.
Aye.
Resolution 25191 is approved four to one. Uh, that will conclude our meeting. We do have a work session at 5:00 o'clock. Any other council... His name is Jeremy, though.
First item on the agenda of this for council meeting for August eighteenth, nine thirty ten part council meeting. First item is approval of monthly bills, approved for July twenty, twenty-five monthly bills. Any questions? Approval of minutes, August fourth, twenty twenty-five, five p.m. council work session, August fourth, twenty twenty-five, six p.m. council meeting. Any questions? Public hearings, resolution twenty-five one ninety-two, approved request for restaurant, retail, liquor license for live. Terazita LLC at twenty-six fourteen, highway thirty-one south.
Yeah, this is for a new restaurant and they have met all requirements.
Any questions? Right, we debate this, Josh. We've already cut these, we're just asking your permission to assess the profit. Any questions? All right, resolutions, resolution twenty-five two zero seven, approved Fourth Avenue traffic signals engineering proposal from Morrell Engineering.
Yeah, I was asked to look at the need for the signals at Fourth and Johnson and Fourth and Graham. And this is just to get this engineering firm to do a study on those, a warrant analysis and see if those signals are still warranted.
All right, any questions? This came from some citizens.
Yeah, I had an action, multiple citizens have reached out, asked us, and I started driving that way eventually.
Man, can we do this one on six six seven, one six seven. Any other questions? All right, resolution twenty-five two zero eight, approved news sound for Kerry Matthews Architectural Services.
Well, Mr. Jackson may have more, but it's basically, my understanding is it's OMI, and this is the architect that's going to help with using the existing building coast to bring up Kerry Matthews and make recommendations on how to build it under those guidelines. It's a hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred dollars, and that's, that's, it's already in a budget. So that's what this does, it just supplements what OMI is doing.
That's exactly right. Any questions? It's a flat, it's a flat fee?
Yes. Well, if, unless we ask for, it's the same thing you normally say, unless we ask for more work to be done after that.
Any other questions? All right, resolution twenty-five, this was an addition today, resolution twenty-five two zero nine, reviles appointment of director planning Chad Common. Do you want to state it or?
Well, HR director, basically, Mr. Bowman came back and asked, he asked for one particular salary, and we got close. And then he came, after he thought about it, he'd already accepted coming, but he asked, could we consider moving his salary up a little? That's what we're doing here, moved it up one step. That's what, that's what it does, it moves up what he was, what y'all approved.